I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's now six o'clock. And then I'll ask. Put a brula to the roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Sheffron. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Sisler. Thank you. Profila. Thank you. Profi Biano. Thank you. Trustee Giuliano. Thank you. I'd like to know that Trustee Giuliano is participating remotely this evening, which remotely was duly noted on the official village website, on the official newspaper website, and also conspicuously posted at the local council. So, thank you.
May I say, just real quick, Bob, if you can put your phone on mute, maybe that will help our the event issue. Do you think, Kevin?
Billy's ready to talk, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Attorney Sisler.
Present.
Thank you. Myself. Director Ramon Dente. Thank you. I confirm now mayor that we have a form.
Thank you. Now we can go through the agenda items and sort of tell if you can go through those agenda items, those action items as well.
Thank you. Resolution number one, resolution approving the minutes of July tenth, twenty twenty three. Do we have a motion?
Okay. Today, motion second. Second. Trustee Biano. Can we pause for a moment for corrections and discussing?
Thank you. I have several corrections, if I may, on page number one. Motion regarding the village clerk, who is motion ten, four zero, that should be motion two to one. Same page regarding the village treasurer. Minutes we do not read the vote. To read two, one, and two. To yes. To no, one extension. That would be a motion fail to the court. Page number two, the labor council. We have a type of radical error of motion by Don Giuliano. That is a faulty. That could be an upper case letter. Page number seven, motion number twelve. That motion failed. Prime Pogira. There was a subsequent motion that passed. That motion was a declination of the ruling. So with your permission, both changes, please.
Will there be other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Close. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gonna watch for Bob. Giving a thumbs up.
All right.
I just really.
Bob, you can turn it off mute when you're ready to vote, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution number two, resolution approving the appointment of Donald Pierce as treasurer of the village of Port Jefferson, effective August.
Can you still hear us, Bob?
There we go. Gotcha.
Resolution number two, resolution approving the appointment of Donald Pierce as treasurer of the village of Port Jefferson, effective August seventh, twenty twenty three.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Biano, motion second. Yes. Oh, okay, okay, I'll second. Okay, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote on this one. Sure.
Going to acknowledge the need to work at the village and acknowledge that when the change in administration, often these divisions that are shifted and have great gratitude and respect for these companies.
I know that you ran on a platform of change. But I do not believe that the residents knew you could change to clear out the heart of the employees in this village. You have gotten good three and maybe more loyal, hardworking, knowledgeable people. Now, once again, we've been in motion. This after telling her a mountain within five hours earlier, it sounds good. The treasurer will save. It just seems to me that the person's word no longer means anything.
I can add to the discussion. Since I've taken office, I've learned a lot about the operations in the village. And I'm more convinced than ever that the change is appropriate. So.
If it's what I know it is, I have fact nation.
Fact nation.
And the department's reports, I have.
You're not pretty much there in what you're talking about saying.
I can answer after a few reasons.
What I've learned so far. I'm still.
You have the ability to go into the sessions.
Yeah, okay. Do we have to table a vote?
You don't have a vote with vote. The motion, the motion right now is to approve with this, with the, with the second, so read a roll call of that motion.
Attorney, if that's what you're doing, vote and go to the discussion of the government.
Is there any further discussion?
I would just say that new administration, as close as you are to people and as good as they are, been in politics my entire life. That's the way the cookie crumbles. The mayor gets to choose her team. And I'm inclined to give the mayor her team.
And what I'll say about the choice of Don Pierce is that Don Pierce is, he is a CPA. He is municipal forensic accountant. He's been working at the school district of Hefalo Hills for the past several years, managing a three hundred million dollar budget, which is quite a bit larger than our thirteen million dollar budget and three million dollar or so country club budget. He is very familiar with all the people that work in the village right now. The transition would be minimal. And as, as trustee beyond have said, this is an administration that I, going forward, would like to be able to work with the people who I know and trust to do a great job to the residents of the village of Port Jefferson. So. I, I have, I don't know if we need to table a vote. I guess I'm ready to vote. If anybody's not ready to vote, let me know and.
Out of respect for, oh, you know, updates being able to express their opinions before voting, I be a favor of the table to not be commencing everyone out before the discussion.
Okay. We'll wait. Well, we have.
Add one thing.
Yes.
I feel going to for a sec. Again, as I said in the last meeting, I'm opposed to this. Not because I'm opposed to Don, but because I am approving Denise. I think Don would be a great addition to the village. I've worked with him before and I know that he's quite capable. So I don't want to think that anybody that I'm fully against Don, but I totally support him himself.
Well, maybe we'll get through this agenda anytime they need to join us for exact details. We've got to be out there. Okay.
You have the most. You don't make the motion stable.
In favor? All in favor? Vote votes. Motion carries. Number three.
Resolution, state of the public hearing, participants at Fox PM on August twenty first, twenty twenty three, at Village Hall, one twenty one West Broadway, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven. Regarding a proposal for law concerning changes to chapter two forty five, vehicles and traffic of the code of the village of Port Jefferson to install north and south facing stop line on the west and east side of Draghi Road. With the south basement signs located across the street from the north curb of the maintenance facility avenue in the vicinity of the crosswalk. And the north basement signs located on a grass cutout adjacent to the crosswalk sign and the record, the search for a note of the public hearing of four.
A little bit more background on that, on the resolution. This comes out of a series of initiatives that we are working on in the Department of Public Works and the Code Enforcement Bureau to help mitigate traffic and speeding and safety issues around these two areas that, but the school district access points, so Brook Road, some of the other elements that we're talking about, which do not require a resolution or a public hearing include potentially a sign at the high school athletic field entrance on Brook Road that restricts a drop off of students there for athletic events. Placing a speed trailer on Brook Road, which is there and should be activated within the next day or two. Intermittent presence of police patrol vehicles to act as a speed trap or as a speeding deterrent. School district administration, meetings with the school district administration to establish communication protocols and ongoing activities, working with them, and then consider a traffic engineering study for the future further traffic coming approaches. And then around Scraggy Hill, we're looking at putting that same speed trailer there two weeks later to collect data there. And then again, at the start of the school year, following the relocation back at Brook Road at the start of the school year. Installing those stop signs, northern, south, at the entrances of the maintenance facility and the administration building to paint stop on the roadway leading up to the existing stop signs at the west and east sides of the entrances and exits of Scraggy Hill school. Install a southern facing speed limit sign, which has already been done. And extending the W O line on the roadway leading to the crosswalk as well as potentially installing or, I mean, extending the speed tables that are currently on the roadway there that only go across half of the roadway. So there was a lot of traffic that seems to be going around the speed table to avoid the speed table. So that seems to be an even further safety issue. And then consider installing a third speed table before the stop sign on the west side of Scraggy Hill. So those are the other activities initiatives that we're working on and we will be next meeting with the Department of Education members and administration to further this so that everything can happen prior to the start of the school year, if and so are possible. So. That's that resolution. Okay.
Thank you. Resolution number one, resolution approving the request of Renee Lermanman.
Oh, no, these are just, you can simply bend the items.
That's not until the new number twelve, like we may need to. Resolution number four, resolution approving request of Renee Lermanman to increase the overall rate rate the night manager title currently pertaining to Ron Carlton, Alan Gordon, Nick Shurin, Dennis Fadé, and John Van Gelder. Apologies for any mispronunciation. The eighteen dollars per hour, effective August third, twenty twenty three, owns the assumption of the additional. Resolution number five, resolution approving request of Renee Lermanman to hire Sharon Filbrick as a full time recreation assistant manager manager and an annual salary of forty four thousand dollars per year, effective September eleventh, twenty twenty three. Bill rights and benefits for the elective bargaining agreement currently in force between the village of Port Jefferson and C S A local one thousand. The hire of provisional Suffolk County Civil Service.
That's been on that. Did we receive the document in the packet?
No, but you've all seen the jobs come to the wire meeting.
Stan and I have, but that was months ago, but I'm not sure that we.
Oh, we have it here if anybody wants it. It's September thirty. Would you like to see that, Bob, as well?
I'm actually believing that, but I have a question. Is this a replacement somebody or a hire or?
Sharon is a new hire. If it were to be considered a replacement, it would have been somebody who was, who left the before last year.
Okay. And then.
But the question does exist. The line item does exist.
My dream is that the redoing is the basis of the service.
Yeah, correct. Suffolk County Bargains. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Resolution number six, resolution ratifying the hiring of Maria Melbury as a part time assistant for the mayor and an annual salary of twenty five thousand dollars per year, effective July tenth, twenty twenty three. Resolution number seven, resolution overriding the village excessive, the village created settle. Small claims assessment review, scar. Cases for maximum one thousand dollars in tax deduction for one year without requiring more than approval.
Do you have a explanation on that?
No, it was explained to me that this is an annual vote that takes place and that any small claims assessments under one thousand dollars would in turn create a bureaucratic, prenuptial. I mean. Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of, a lot of small claims elements or decisions that are made. So like you talked about, model about it, insurance would have to explain it to you and would have been. So, but if, if you're unsure about what that means, then we'd be able to extend that to you. But I think you voted on next year.
Some of them are smaller than a hundred dollars, a hundred seventy five.
So you're giving a senior party to him to say, yes, sir.
Up to that amount. Up to that amount only. For Mayor of Third, the Fed and the Day and everyone.
That's more of a reform. More than that, actually, about year over year.
One of the, one of the six.
Resolution number eight, resolution approving the attached contract with services permitted by Nicole Jane for owning the provision of consulting services in relation to France's current progress on a month to month basis. And authorizing Mayor Sheffron to sign the contract with services obtained in the village of Port Jefferson and Nicole Jane. Resolution number nine, resolution authorizing a payment of one hundred twenty five dollars per hour to photographer John Griffin, the provision of photographic coverage of the village of Port Jefferson on an ad needed basis for the attached confirmation letter.
Some questions that I know they've sent to the board, but didn't hear back. So, have there been any internal?
Yeah, so formerly we paid our photographer a hundred and seventy, no, a hundred and seventy five dollars per headshot. So first, out of the gate, we're saving fifty dollars per headshot, hundred per hour on this per headshot, even the little headshot was taken, two headshots were taken within a half hours period, that was three hundred and fifty dollars per headshot. So this is an hourly rate. So what we can do, if you want to re-articulate your questions, I can.
Sure, thank you. So, well, first, and maybe now I've noted that John Griffin is an incredible photographer in his work. His resume is very impressive. He's a neighbor down the street of mine. He's out with C and my dog are buddies. So, you know, all, all very positive, but mostly, you know, his work is fantastic. And I think we're very lucky for the opportunity to be working with him. I just want to clarify on a few points. One was, who either is it staff? The board or the mayor is going to make a call regarding when photography services are engaged, determine how many hours for each event, and under which circumstances, but a retouching or express turnaround can be requested.
So I think there can be requests for photography and then discussion. As far as I know, the mayor would decide, staff could decide as well, but after discussion with the mayor, just for approval. Sure, I mean, let's see what the event is, see what it, like the Hill Climb, Dickens Festival, all the things that are former photographers took pictures of. How did they approve? How were those discussed?
I don't know. I think it was internal approvals. So I'm just, I'm asking clarifying questions. I guess Scott buddies up with the second question. Their maximum budget, whether they're either monthly or annually for this contract. So usually, like, usually contractors will pay with a maximum amount of X amount monthly. Or annually, but I just didn't know if we wanted to set that. Again, not trying to restrict necessarily, but.
We can look at what our budget was prior, as that is the guide. Probably come way under that.
Just trying to clarify, you know, as far as contractual services go, like Nicole's contracted. Who says?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's tough to predict. I mean, but we could actually go back and look at the event schedule. We can forget, but we, we can identify the maximum number of hours a month that's closed. And anything open about that, we can, we have the request of the mayor. We can make that part of the deal.
We're, we're bored of group, I guess, because of the reason for the attorney.
Um.
I get Nicole. I'm not, I'm not, there, there's nothing about a hundred twenty five dollars that I'm testing. I think it's a very fair rate. And again, very grateful for this opportunity, just as far as.
I'm just trying to get that, I'm just trying to get, like, if there is, let's say, let's say it's a, he has ten hours a month. Ten hours a month. So he, the ten hours is up. Something's happening prior to the next board meeting that we need photography on, that we would wherever. So, is that what we should do is call emergency? I'm just kidding. No emergency meetings for photography, but, you know, is that something that you would see requiring board approval?
Just, I, I think it would be, if we set a cap, it would be a huge, theoretically something that's unusual to, to surpass. So, go get a.
Take a shot of your language, Rebecca. I'd be happy to. You're captioned very difficult, which is.
Yes.
There are various communities.
Sure.
I'm moving out.
That's it. The dwelling, so to see.
I'll look back for last year and see what we spent.
What do you think, Joe?
Use last year as a guide.
That's a good way to do it. I agree with you on those.
Actually. That's your point two. To rabbit over everybody that.
Could be a fair amount of them.
And if you're doubting, you go back to, if there's something nineteen, eighteen.
Or twenty.
All kind of. So you look at all those years and sort of average it out.
Average it out a little bit.
See who would pay photography, photography now.
Well, I think we both, you know, not succeed the previous this year's budget for photography.
We'll take a look at the whole thing. Got to bring some inflation because I'm getting everything.
So again, I agree that it's a very fair rate.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I think.
So what do we do with that?
Do we, is it possible, because adding the language not to exceed the twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three this year's budget for photography?
If you want to do it now, I'd say maybe add a percentage on top of it. So not to exceed five percent more, you know, come up with a number above that.
With inflation. Put the five percent, create five percent, that would see. Okay. And then if it didn't exceed, we'd have to bring back.
So get the board, yeah, get approval and we could extend it. Doesn't have to be just for that time, you know, let's say we hit the budget somehow in six months.
Right.
Yes, at that point, extend it for another.
Okay, that sounds flexible and to mayor. Yeah, Mayor Jumper's point, you know, based on previous rates, like they want to hit that budget. So, and I appreciate John being really important.
We are. The ten. Resolution approving the attached letter of engagement, mother ball, millennial, LLC, as special counsel, and that is the village of Port Jefferson and authorizing Mayor Sheffron to sign the attached engagement letter in the village of Port Jefferson and mother ball, millennial, LLC. Number eleven, resolution approving the attached letter of engagement from Diego Sisler, Esquire, East State, and Dave Moran, Esquire, at the village council in the village of Port Jefferson on a month to month basis, and authorizing Mayor Sheffron to sign the attached engagement letter in the village of Port Jefferson and Diego Sisler, Esquire. Number twelve, resolution establishing the village of Port Jefferson and lead agency classifying a proposed action under type one action, adopting a determination of nonsignificance, negative declaration pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, CIPRA, in connection with the New York State Environmental Protection Fund, U D F, grant application for the conceptual planning and design of the six acre passive park located along the north side of Island Boulevard in the incorporated village of Port Jefferson.
Do we have a motion? Trustee Alex, do you have a second? Trustee can say, and Rebecca, would you like to, or we have any discussion?
Sure, I'll pick on for the board. This is a necessary step in planning for the U of C Environmental Protection Fund grant that we're currently, we need to be on finalizing the application for. The application is for approximately three hundred thousand dollars for the planning phase of this park to take it from conceptual phase, which it's currently at, and bring it to double ready plans. There's a many, a great many other things that we will bring together for this grant, which is due later this week. But the CIPRA declaration is something that is required in order to lower the grant. We, I know Attorney Lieutenant Paris looked at all the documents and also we have a new one with the mayor and staff members to look at the, you know, to discuss this, if there are any questions. Mayor Sheffron brought up a couple of good points that V H B looked into regarding the past use of the of the, of the six acres, the asphalt plant at some point. And so V H B went back and looked at that and added any language necessary to the, to the review. But otherwise, they've come up with the conclusion that's a non-declaration that are looking for the board to with the village and lead agency support as looking to drive with that. Questions or thoughts?
Can we talk about the financial, when? The finances, is it time to talk about that now, or do we wait to talk about that?
If you'd like to, I don't know. It's, it's relevant, you know, good to be the village is committed to applying for the grant, so the mayor's asking to speak to the fifty percent match I believe for, for this grant. You know, any large municipal project has an equally large price tag to it. Again, the, the grant where, you know, the price is about three hundred thousand dollars. So if granted, the fund would be about a hundred fifty thousand dollars and the village would then come up with a match. It would either be, you know, village funds, you know, we discussed at the meeting. come up with a match. It would either, um, be, you know, village funds, uh, you know, we discussed at the meeting, ARPA, as well as the parkland fees, uh, but these can all, these fees can also be, um, uh, supplemented with, uh, jumpstart funds and semi, uh, broken even funds. So, uh, you know, we, we continued a conversation regarding where that village map is going to come from, uh, which we can look into between now and December, um, uh, largely to make sure we're prepared. I have anticipation of hopefully being granted of these funds, but even if, uh, you know, we were told by V H B that I was knowledgeable about this grant process, but even if funds are secured, um, early in the process, so, you know, early next year, um, we would be able to go back and amend the budget to say, you know, we, if county funds came through in February twenty twenty-four, we could then utilize those, um, along, you know, to supplement village funds for the match. So, answer?
Yes, definitely. Yep. So in December.
Uh, December, we will know, uh, what, where or the other. Okay. So keep your fingers crossed for December.
Okay. So for, um, um, we have motion for this specific resolution because, can you explain why?
Yes, because in many times it's a requirement of the grant that we have a specific local vote, make sure that everyone in the board are in control.
So, okay, so we, we have, we have the motion, we have a second, all in favor? Well, did we? Oh, can we type a roll of most? We start like that. Thank you. Trustee Lab?
Yes.
Trustee Giando?
Yes.
Trustee Giuliano?
Okay.
Trustee can say?
Yes.
Mayor Sheffra?
Thank you. That's as fine as you like.
Number thirteen, to approve the warrants dated seven point one twenty-three, as presented by Trevor Mordende, approved by claims order. Have included in the agenda.
Uh, I just wanted to open this up for discussion for a moment before we, uh, vote on all the consent agenda items. Um, I have, uh, asked that the claims come to the board of trustees on Tuesday, the week before the meeting. So we have more time to review the claims versus getting them either Friday afternoon or Monday morning as a board. We just don't have enough time to review them. And, uh, the claims auditor has also mentioned that by reviewing the claims, um, on Friday, it really doesn't give him a chance to, to ask questions, you know, have resolutions in time to be prepared for the Monday meeting. So, um, he has agreed to, uh, review those claims on a Tuesday versus a Friday, um, or a Monday, and then that the trustees, the target date for the trustee to be able to review them would be Wednesday. So there would be plenty of time to look at them. The other thing I requested was the check register, um, by check, by check date, which indicates all of the, um, checks that have been cut and to whom the checks are being paid to, because as we've all seen in the, um, in the claims, the warrants, it simply states that amount and the funding source, and there's really no detail. Even these claims are, the check register is, is requiring of some additional detail from, from my perspective, and I have asked for receipts uh, for what we are paying, um, and what we are getting billed. And so I expect, I anticipate to get that, uh, at the next um, deadline, uh, which would be, I guess, I don't know, Wednesday or Tuesday. Yeah, the second, or the first of August. So I hope to have it. If anyone else wants to see the receipts, just please, uh, let us know and we'll be happy to provide that for you. And you all received the, did you all receive the check registers?
In that case.
Yeah. Okay.
And we just, uh, change this party.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea. I think it's fantastic.
Thank you, Bob.
At the side of wealth, um, there is a true that means we will also make it available to public.
Correct. It's out of foil. It's out of foil.
Excellent.
All right. Um, so also on this, uh, are brought out some highlights. The, the big ticket items are brought out by, by the treasurer's office, uh, the general fund, both are insurance, health insurance. So just thought it would be helpful to be able to see those big ticket items. Right, um. Okay, for the receiving resolutions and the warrants, do we have a motion?
Um.
To approve, trustee Kase, second by trustee Last on favor. Okay, just, sorry, sorry.
Except for one for, uh.
Step number twelve.
Well, right, right.
And, and also the, the table item.
Right, okay. Fine.
Please. Did they say all in favor? All in favor?
Fine.
Motion passes, motion carries back to them.
I'm excited, excited to have, uh, Karen over.
She is great. I agree. Thanks for saying that. Um. Okay, so board reports and then executive session, or if the concession is board reports and then executives?
Sorry, sort of my turn.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, uh, trustee Kase, would you like to start?
Sure. Bob will speak fast so that we can have you on there exactly. Uh, all right, uh, so, uh, I emailed out to, uh, fellow board members with the current status of, uh, work that I had to pull together for committee and past force mission statements. Um, uh, Mayor Sheffra let me know that there's a community member assisting with this. So, uh, but Bob wrote a, um, uh, email back. And so if there's any other comments, please do, uh, review. Um, the tree committee members attended the near urban forestry council's relief conference at Hofstra University, uh, last Friday. It was incredibly, uh, enlightening and, uh, the members are going to be, uh, gathering statements, uh, to submit for the next board meeting so that, um, you know, having been said by the village, they will see, uh, you know, what, what they're bringing back to the village. Uh, the conservation advisory council, uh, we virtually, uh, we gathered in the same room to virtually attend a, uh, C C E reimagining Long Island lawns webinar, um, which shared helpful homeowner recommendations regarding fertilizer use, farming habits, and water conservation native plantings and more. So hoping to, uh, include a link somewhere to be able to share this with our residents here. That was, again, very accessible and, uh, and helpful. Um, and then the six acres park committee, uh, we discussed that, uh, at length with the C B R view this, uh, you know, received more than twelve letters of support from, um, different, uh, representative levels of government, uh, nonprofits, community groups. Uh, so we're uh, again, just putting everything together and I think that's helped with the process so far. And, uh, lastly, did we, did we quit that theme, um, the e-recycling? I have, I have an old copy of it. There is, I didn't want to miss out. On August fifth, there is an e-waste, uh, recycling event up at the Perry Street lot, area the one and zero, um, from eight to twelve, eight a.m. to twelve p.m. Uh, so again, Saturday, the fifth, uh, there will be flyers circulated likely with, uh, certain media um, to, uh, let our residents know that this is available to them and it's lists exactly what is accepted and what's not accepted. That's, that's all. Great, great. And that's the end.
Thank you. Trustee Giando?
Uh, I went to the building, planning and, not code important, but building and planning, uh, meeting July thirteenth. Um, it was very interesting. The one thing that did come out is that I think we're going to get a, uh, visit from the folks building the wind farm soon to explain the impacts, which really aren't any impacts of, uh, the shift that will be coming in to swap crews out. Uh, they have it very much under control and I don't want to speak out of turn. I'd rather have them presented so I don't misrepresent anything they're doing. But, uh, they were for the board to, uh, get permission to cite, uh, basically two shipping companies that give us, uh, for storage of items that they will use when the crews change, um, change over. Uh, other than that, there were for June through July, there were twenty-five permit applications and twenty-five certificates of activity, compliance issued, and five rental permits. Um, the one thing they did highlight for me is that they have streamlined, um, their application process. There is no longer any backlog at all, uh, with regard to building permits. Uh, the building permits examiner, our turnaround time from receipt to complete application is about a week or less. And I will provide more detailed information as I settle into this and become more familiar with what they're doing. That's my report.
Thanks. That's where the shipping containers are being cited?
Yeah, they're all going to be by the, the, um, where the barges come in for the power plant. And they are literally behind bushes and they are not, not see them either from the waterside or from the street.
It's down Beach Street.
Down Beach Street, behind the gates for the power.
Oh, thank you.
And they are going to, even, even if it could be seen, they're planting strawberry, more strawberry and trees so that it, it really can't proceed. And they provide plans and they will come in and speak with us, I'm sure, show us.
Thank you, trustee Giando. Uh, trustee Giuliano?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, first thing is, uh, the mayor spoke about the meeting that we have with the D P W, kind of with both, um, reporting of Scrappy Hill and Port Road. So we're getting some progress there. Um, and the other thing that I wanted to touch base on, I want to make sure this is all through the cracks, was the, uh, the, um, letter from, uh, D W Grocer about the, uh, country club landfill I know was given to, uh, to the previous mayor and to, uh, the, the previous village attorney. I just want to make sure that they're still progressing with that and that if we weren't falling behind, nothing was falling through the cracks. So that we can, uh, get the proper permit to be, uh, plan for the, uh.
So, so Bob, do you want to ask them to forward those letters to myself and to the, the, the new village attorney? Would that be?
Yeah, I mean, I just thought I'd forward them, but I, I have them, so I can forward them. But there were two letters, one was sent on the stated April eleventh, the one stated March seventh.
I thought one was the draft and then one was the final, right?
Right, correct.
Okay. Can, can you forward that on or e- even ask P W Grocer to forward it on to, uh, either way, whatever, whatever is easiest? But we, we should establish a dialogue with them again.
Absolutely. Make sure they post it forward.
And was that a contracted service with P W Grocer?
I believe it was. I don't, I don't know if the contract is ever approved.
All right.
All right. I don't know, I don't know at what point it, it got to, uh, uh, approve.
Any backup would be helpful for us to take a look at. All right.
I'll, I'll tell you, P W Grocer would have the backup. Make sure we forward everything out.
And is, is, uh, is our D P W involved in that conversation as well? Steve Gallagher involved?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Steve's. Yeah.
Okay.
Probably more than he wants to be, but yeah.
It is the D P W's jurisdiction, right? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Yes, I don't know why you're not on here. I'm sorry, Steve.
We report from the recreation department, uh, very quickly. This year, they're going to run the summer camps right straight through to the end of August. Uh, it seems that tennis and pickleball are two of the most important activities, most popular activities offered through the rec department. While speaking with Alex, our tennis professional today indicated that we have two hundred and fifty-plus youngsters enrolled in each one of the sports. Um, that's over five hundred unlimited facilities. I feel there has to be some decisions made shortly about the redevelopment of our racket complex up at that country club. And I know the development depends upon our decision, someone's decision to do something about the other wall. That said, uh, both beaches are open with full lifeguard coverage from ten a.m. to six p.m. Please be safe when swimming down here. Swim in the designated areas only, please. Uh, and only during lifeguard coverage. Some upcoming concerts that you might be interested in joining. August tenth at seven o'clock, we have live music of Fleetwood Mac. That concert is in the Harbor, um, Mall by the man's stand at the end. On August twenty-fourth, the concert is going to be on the Ferry Dock. That's going to feature Randy Jackson. The village golf outing is on Thursday, August seventeenth. If you have not received an application and want to be involved, I mean, call the show up at, uh, six two one two eight five, eighteen fourteen. Uh, there's an upcoming meeting of the Parks and Recreation Committee this Wednesday evening at eighty, at six o'clock in the St. Louis room of the village center. None of us have been much interested in the intended use of Roosevelt Park. So that'd be interesting, uh, as a resident. We're all invited to attend. Some other days to remember are Saturday, August nineteenth and Sunday, August twentieth. These are the days for the lifeless boat show, which is a very nice show. Recreation Department president uses our school facilities for many of our programs. May and I will shortly be meeting with school officials to permit the usage for the coming fall and winter seasons. We will also be looking into adding the pools to our facility, um, up at Scrappy Hills for additional programs for both youngsters and adults. That's my report.
Thank you.
The Fleetwood Mac concert, is it the Harbor, Harbor from Hart? It's not Fleetwood Mac, that's the best part of the band.
Fleetwood Mac is, Harbor from Hart.
Harbor from Hart, the band.
Twenty-fourth, Friday night.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, quickly, um, it goes swiftly. Um, I have been sleeping with our, my ethics chemist on, uh, bringing together an ethics workshop. The details of which I will provide, but, um, Steven Lefterball is the attorney who has a very good experience in, in providing these types of workshops and educating and counseling, uh, both board members and employees, and people who serve on in volunteer capacities on boards and committees. So, um, I, 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 I called a date for this and can forward an agenda which hasn't been created yet, but I'm happy to share, um, agendas that have been created for previous workshops. Um, but if, if everybody is available around this table on August tenth, I haven't determined the time yet, but I believe that is a Tuesday. It can be morning, evening, actually.
That's a long day.
Wonderful. And the goal is to have, uh, department heads and board members in the same location at the same time, doing the same thing. So everybody is sort of read in the same way on, on the efforts and procedural, um, activities.
Does that need to be publicly noticed because we're all here?
Um, I, I asked that and I don't believe it does because it's not a village business. It's.
You're not conducting this. Very conducted. You're discussing, discussing.
Yes.
Correct. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else have feedback on that, on that date?
Day of the week?
It's a Thursday. Okay, my other, I already talked about the warrant review process. Um, I also wanted to inform the board that has reached out to the, um, uh, so the state comptroller, uh, the, um, division of local government and school accountability, that's L G S A, uh, to request a uh, performance audit of our village government seeking findings or conclusions based on, you know, evaluation and evidence against criteria. So we can use these findings or conclusions to approve, to improve program. program performance and operations, reduce costs and contribute to public accountability. Um, there is a local office in Hapa of this, um, of this division. And the contact person there is Igo Fracken, so he has been contacted and responded to this request. Um, basically, the goals are to enable and encourage maintenance or improvement of fiscal health by increasing efficiency and effectiveness, managing costs, improving processes and service delivery, and accounting for and protecting assets. And also to promote government reform and faster, foster good government governance by utilizing up-to-date information and expert technical assistance. So, um, this is something that is not uncommon for new administrations to, uh, to endeavor upon as transition happens. And, um, I know when I was campaigning, I talked about uh, doing a, um, a, uh, forensic audit. And I think, uh, rather than spend what we're told could be in the six figures for asking a firm to come in and take a look at, at our finances. The state controller's office offers these services, um, as part of their responsibility to the state of New York. So, um, this is something that I've invited and the timing is uncertain right now. Uh, it could take six months for them to turn, turn it around. This is the same office that, uh, did the audit of our, um, village justice, uh, office. So, and that was back there in twenty twenty, so.
That yielded a lot of earth.
It did, it did. So, what would this be similar or not? And we're going to, you know, just look for efficiencies and other products lines for the village of Port Jefferson. That's my report. Okay, um, do we have a motion to, into an executive session? So, okay, please.
Second.
All in favor?
I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure, dear, I'll ask you, and Bob, I'm not sure if we can remain, and you being online is, is, is qualifies for us being in executive session. That's, I guess I.
No, because we don't want to keep him recorded, so we can keep him on the phone. And turn off the recording.
Can you stop recording?
Can you tell me?
Okay, let's stop recording.